All right.
Pause meeting in order, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
As to reply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, put her out in the motion for the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion to approve during further discussion. Here none, roll call.
Bert, Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Brian.
Thank.
Hi.
All right, next up, public comments. Stay free.
Um, so I'm Stacey.
Do you want to come, just come up to the podium, Mary?
Um, so I founded the Harrisburg Aquatics Foundation. Our hope is to raise twenty-four million dollars for an indoor pool rather than an outdoor pool. So we're gonna start on that. I would like some help from the city, though, maybe linking either a webpage or a Facebook page to the city site so people know where to find us. Um.
You don't know, you don't know yet, so.
Yeah.
Somebody will say you.
I'm not.
There's a lot that we.
There's a lot.
There's a lot that we're gonna find out, so.
Yes, and I'm excited and I'm gonna do it and it's just, it really is, so.
I like it.
It sounds good, I'm happy to see somebody pick one.
I have a really, really good committee. A lot of really good people volunteered to help me. So I'm super excited about it.
Perfect. Are you still looking for volunteers or?
Absolutely, if you want to join our committee, absolutely.
Okay.
Our hope is to have one fundraiser a month. For now, until we can get into the big stuff. We're also going to maybe see a, you know, some of the bigger companies coming in. Sanford, Vera, anybody. Maybe wants to name it.
Right.
So.
Perfect.
Um, in June, we wanna start with Harrisburg Days. I mean, July, we're gonna have a poker run. August, we're gonna have a silent auction. December, we're gonna have a fall fest. October, a haunted house. And then December, we're gonna do gift dropping and have Santa Claus, so. We've got a lot of things worth that.
Oh, good, awesome. It's great, nice to see you.
Yeah. Absolutely. Could be a chance to reach out to see Paul's folks about their indoor, what they kind of went through or anything like that, or is it still?
We will be, but that's what they paid for the aquatic center was twenty-four million. And that's included everything inside that aquatic center, and do we really need everything in there? I don't know. But at this point, I'm throwing out a number that has a plan, yeah.
Perfect. There's a goal.
Absolutely. A reachable goal.
Yeah. Realistic goal, too.
Yeah, you know, it's like, well, mine shouldn't be too hard.
Well, I'm talking about the amount required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm hoping for some big sponsors. I'm hoping that the town will come in and help with some of these fundraisers, you know, and build everything up the way it used to be. We're just gonna take the town and they're gonna want it. They're gonna have to want it just as bad as I do, and I don't even have any kids, so I'm not at home anymore, so I have no idea why I'm doing this, but I am.
Oh, appreciate that.
So.
Perfect.
So if I could get with Andrew maybe sometime, I don't even know who Andrew is.
Andrew's.
Um, and maybe talk about having a new setup.
Yeah.
I think it's very broad at all.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Coming on.
All right, we will. Do two business item number one, second reading ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero-one supplemental appropriations ordinance.
Um, no, came through from the second for free. And this is for that difference in the sidewalk, right? And that was part of it. That, that made a change, yeah.
Okay. I'm moving to approve ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero-one supplemental appropriations ordinance. Second. Have a motion to approve during further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Bert, Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.
Business item number two, resolution twenty-two-one dash eleven annexation of hench properties.
Sorry, I'm gonna address different items, two, three, four, and five together throughout the act on the double lift course, but. Um, this is a series of. Mostly planned annexation. We were centered around some of the pre-annexation agreements that had been signed in the elements of the Trump line going out to. Elementary school, so it includes mostly what was hench property. Hen's school, the landowner who sold to the school. So he had signed pre-annexation agreements for all this property getting to the elementary school. So it includes these properties, includes the school property. Um, one of them you'll see says Kelly Nelson, that because he purchased this piece from Hen's and is moving ahead with its development. And then what wasn't so planned with some other hench property to the north includes. This piece here is attached to this via, it's one plaque, but we're only adding the whole portion here. Branding. This piece, this piece has the flagpole extension over here, and it includes then this piece. And this piece is the one that goes by that other name. Um, and you'll see that it was, there was both a pre-annexation agreement and a pre-annexation agreement with it. The pre-annexation agreement. Were able to do other things in pre-annexation agreements without, without access and right-of-way and stuff, so that's why we still wanted the pre-annexation agreement. And to lay out some of the other. Thing that, and then you can see the new plaque being laid out there, the preliminary version of it, white line. That's the, the new owner, or platted that piece off. He has yet to decide whether that will be. For his personal home or a potential future commercial endeavor. So it's, uh, all of those next few business items, we call it those. Question on any of those? Collectively, it's a pretty big, um, set of annexations. It'll extend our city boundary a mile to the west there to. Takes us about half a mile further north.
From a population standpoint, do we know how many people live within all of the annexations that we're looking at for there?
Zero. We are not, because we're not annexing Mr. Hen's house or another house that's owned, that's where we're annexing just that back piece. There's nobody here that's living on.
Okay.
Uh, the, the soonest. Um, that there would be would be the Kelly Nelson, where he was. This is primarily just to follow along the. Horseman. Yeah, that's how it certainly started was, because that horseman runs. Along that black hole catches up with the drain, swaying, comes up to the school, one branch to the school, and another branch off to the side, so. Yeah, this was, was based off of the pre-annexation agreement with the horseman, so it was hench. I consider a lot of land you had, and could either develop or sell all of it, in some ways, so you. Saw the opportunity to. To annex more of what you had, and we're happy to accommodate.
That, or entering gives us a lot more say when you're in development land.
Yeah, and, um, you know, it will push out our extradeerisexual three-mile boundary a little bit because we run into the equidistance thing with. With T Nancy, Nancy Ball. This, the annexation to the north of two-hundred-and-seventy-second into the west of western. Here. That is. Was actually in an area that was in joint planning and zoning. Portion between two balls and Lincoln County. So that also was an area that wasn't anticipated to come into the city, but two balls. Seems that it would be costly to sue her that in the future, and we are there with Sue right now, so. And it's always, and they, we're, we're touching, ready to go, whereas if they waited for two balls in this joint planning, it'd be some time.
Is there any? Um, change in township stuff that has to happen to, or is there, like, as far as, like, jurisdiction, that doesn't, or pre-annexation, pretty much?
Sure.
Anals all that, or is there?
Township, um, the annexation itself is, yeah, it's turned, it does, there's no ball, per se. With the township, though, probably. This is a, this is a different township, I believe, over here than what we're with before, so. We'll probably just dust off one of our other township road agreements, see if that's amenable to use both. Um, for two-hundred-and-seventy-second street, but, and I'm sure it is, because right now it's not like, even though we're annexing half of the road, or. In some cases, maybe a portion of both sides. We're not having development on these things either, so.
You're not handing in the traffic.
Right, so the, the, the use of cell, you know. I know what the plan's going to be, and they talked about for Kelly, that we gotta basically do the. Continue the pavement to the second inlet on that land, is what that would be.
Right.
Further east side of that land. Yeah, so, I mean, it's kind of, as developed, it's kind of taking care of itself as far as road improvement on that township so far. A little bit, Kelly, so the, the school's gonna take it back this year, and we're gonna. Be coming back to you guys with the cost share agreement for, for that school portion. Where the township, so they would participate in getting back to this point. Um, the school and us, we're gonna ask the county to see if they want to jump in or not. Um, but then, yeah, Kelly will pick it up from there to. They get access to his property. That covers a very expensive portion of the bridge and everything. And expensive in terms of upgrading a whole section anyway.
Right.
Yeah, the, the. Train crossing.
You can't just use a culvert there, can you? Does it have to be a bridge, or can you use, though?
No, it should probably be a culvert. It's, um. It'd be a series of culverts, which makes it expensive.
Yeah.
It's a weird crossing.
Is it what, a fifty-year-old or a hundred-year-old?
Oh, it's closer to a hundred years.
Well. So it might be due.
Well, Hilton's the last one. Yeah, but yeah, yeah, that's true.
Including your farm traffic only on it, but generally have your traffic for a hundred years.
Yeah. You'll see business item number two, the one of ten deals with multiple separate properties.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash eleven annexation of hench properties, including hench edition track one. Adrian's edition track three. Less the south six-hundred-and-twenty-three point one-six feet of. The north nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight point six eight feet in northeast quarter, section thirty-three. The northwest quarter. Less parts, the sole of section thirty-three. Southeast corner, southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, plus coal and stencil additions of section twenty-eight. North eight-hundred-and-ten feet of the east half, southwest. Section of the quarter, southeast quarter of section twenty-eight. Northwest, uh, quarter of the southeast quarter was four rods in the south, six-hundred-and-fifty-six. Rods in the north, four rods. Of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-eight. And the north half, the north half, the southwest quarter. Less, uh, Sinoa addition, section twenty-seven. All in T one-hundred and R fifty W fifth PM Lincoln County. Totaling approximately three-hundred-and-eighteen point eighty acres. Parts sold in northwest quarter are tract A of the Harrisburg Elementary Number Seven Edition. Track one of the cars edition, track one of Larson's edition, track one of Spring Valley Edition, and track two of Hinge Edition.
Second.
Have a motion to approve during further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Right.
Thank.
Hi.
I'll, I'll move to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve. Annexation track one of the seven four edition located in the north half, the north half, the southwest corner of section twenty-seven. T one-hundred and R fifty W fifth primary in Lincoln County, ten acres.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the further discussion.
Want to verify who got that second.
Sure, I'll figure it out.
Bert.
I'm Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi. I'm going to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash one-three annexation of track two of Hinge Edition located at the northwest quarter. Of second thirty-three, T one-hundred and R fifty W fifth primary in. Lincoln County, South Dakota, nineteen point one acres. Second. Have a motion to approve during further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Hi. Move to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash fourteen annexation of track A of Harrisburg Elementary. Number seven edition located in the northwest corner of section thirty-three, T one-hundred and R fifty W fifth primary in Lincoln County, eighteen point seven one acres. Second. I have a motion to approve during further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
I'm Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.
Wrong, business item number six, approval of rehire part-time summer public works employee. Magenta was with us last year, and she was agreeing to come back this year. Um, the other gentleman that was with her last year. He's running part of a landscape company down Suzun, so he couldn't come back, otherwise he would have gone back to, but this is Magenta coming back, and maybe did last year. She knows the town, so should fit right in good. I'm going to hire Magenta Hammond as a part-time summer public works employee, and her rate of fourteen dollars an hour was starting to be viewed in a second. I have a motion to approve during further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
I'm Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.
This is fan number seven, approval to purchase twenty-two-one top pillar. Two-hundred-and-ninety-nine D three C three H three skid steer. Off Sourcewell contract, zero-three-two-one-one-nine dash cat.
Uh, so, a little bit of background on this and how this came to be. Uh, we originally had plans to purchase, uh, large equipment with our, our wastewater facility loan. Uh, we had done that previously on other loans. However, talked to the state. The last couple of months, saying, hey, we're getting ready to buy this equipment and all that. They say that, um. These SRF loans are no longer eligible to purchase, uh, what they call rolling stock with that loan money. And so, guess we made an assumption a long time ago, and unfortunately, that's not accurate anymore, and so, um. This piece of equipment is a skid steer. Toby, Toby figured out exactly what you, you wanted out there, so it'd be primarily used for the waste park facility. Uh, kind of moving around those pile solids as they come out. Uh, but it can also be used in several other locations, uh, doing typical maintenance activities, uh, small city projects. Uh, things like that, I think, in the long run, will actually save money on projects. By purchasing this equipment, so it's A, it's needed, and B, uh, it's a, it's a good plus for our, our own maintenance projects anyway. Um, so that's kind of how it came to be and all of that, if you have questions on the exact equipment or whatever, uh, Toby's your guy.
Is this something we could use as far as, uh, take, try and take care of seven and return on?
Yes, exactly. Yep, we, we have planned to do some work on the industrial part on full sediment, we think. We can do that. Our sidewalk projects, usually we, uh, contract the entire thing out with sidewalks, we could maybe do a little bit of, uh, work. Uh, recreating and stuff like that, cutting and preparation, and they just come in and pour that sidewalk. Uh. What else is there? We'll be near the whole.
That asphalt removals, you have to.
All right, we're gonna do more asphalt removals last, last year, and we seem to be. Not be able to keep up with the contractor, we do our own removals, save some money, and then the contractors come in and pay. We just didn't have enough equipment to do that in a timely manner. Uh. And it's just, it's a lot of things.
When will we take delivery of it? What's that? When will we take delivery? It's in the shop right now, it's in demo.
Okay. I'm glad you even said it was demo.
In demo, in demo with Captain Dear.
Um, to the point of usability, Mary, you said that this would, um, if you approved. This would be paid for, uh, out of all of the district wires, who are they pulling all of the funds that he does with all of his first women purchases? And that would be done with Cap on me, I'm using our company.
I'm moving to purchase a twenty-two-one category two-ninety-nine D three C three, skid steer off Sourcewell contract. Zero-three-two-one-one-nine dash cat, and the amount of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. Second. Have a motion to approve during further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
I'm Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.
This is number, item number eight, consider proposal for public works office addition from MLC Construction.
So this one kind of needs a little bit of background as well. Me and Toby, uh, were realizing, uh, you know, almost a year ago now, that, uh, we're all out of space at, at public works. And we plan to prepare, uh, hire additional public works employees in the coming years. And so, with that, I, I, I did my own space needs study on public works, I also laid out a potential plan of where. Future buildings could go throughout the public works campus. I did it to four percent growth and seven percent growth, and I estimated, you know, snowplows and trucks and other equipment that Toby might. Might need to purchase, um, and also just staffing, um, based on our population growth, and so. Uh, from that study, um. At four or seven percent growth, it's already obvious to us that, uh, we already don't have any space for any more employees, and we. End up hiring more, probably one at least a year or every other year in the near future, and, and so on and so forth, as it grow faster exponentially, right? And so with that, uh, we put together a, a layout of, uh, of a building that would. Provide fifteen to twenty more workspaces, which would be projected to provide enough workspaces to keep us, uh. Uh, without being filled for ten to fifteen years, so it's a pretty good investment for long term. Uh, that being said, uh, in the budget, we had intended to improve some things around there with twenty thousand dollars. We also have a seventy thousand dollar budget item for paving. Uh, we would like to instead, instead of paving this year, take that seventy and add it to that twenty for ninety thousand. And do the first phase of, of the, uh, the obvious expansion, which would be the shell of the building. And then next year, we finish it off for, uh, approximately ninety to a hundred thousand, finish it all the way off. So we, we really tried to do a lot of planning on this, trying to make sure that we're just not sticking something on a building and then, in a couple of years, you know, oh, shoot, why would we do that? You know, we definitely do have a plan for this, and it is needed. Uh, unfortunately, we, we didn't budget it like that, uh, nine months ago, so. That's kind of what we're came to right now. Toby got a call from, uh, MLC Construction, um, they've done some work for us previously. So did you want to talk about the contours? Or anything about? Contruers. Just the, the layout of the addition here. Yeah, yeah, it would, it would go right on the front of the, the current shop there, it'd be almost exactly the same, uh, size as that current, uh, shop or office area. Thirty by thirty, is what that is, and we'd add another thirty by thirty. Uh, provide some parking to get in the front. You know, we're thinking generally the layout of the, uh, the public works campus is, it's gonna stay about the same, we're gonna. That roadway will stay generally about the same, we'll add some buildings on the north, uh, property line, and then. Someday, and you know, twenty years or so, we might need a big building. Like, uh, you probably see that one that, that, uh, Lincoln County Highway Department has, or where Sue Pauls has, and all those bigger things, and we get to be a big, big city, that's when that, that thing comes. Right now, um, we can, we can get away with these smaller buildings for the next, you know, ten to twenty years. But I guess we're not asking for, uh, more money this year, we're asking that money can change from one fund to another. And we hope that phase two of the project would be able to be budgeted for twenty-two, so.
Yeah, that was the problem there, yeah, totally. What is the price of that thing?
Oh, yeah, it's another, uh, you know, in talking with all these contractors right now, um.
Prices are ridiculous.
If you want to do something, we got a little poetry to write, so.
Yeah, changes, yeah.
Yep.
How much do you, you know, that's right? The prices, not, uh, like. Three hundred percent, probably. But like I said, it changes every day. Yeah, most lumber companies want to do like a call for lumber. I went to buy some stuff, and I saw it, it's done, it used to be like one forty-seven, or now like seven eighty-nine, or something like that, or a piece of. And so how long does this cool good for?
Thirty, thirty days, news was down, then about a week. It's already, since, it's funny, we're going back and forth on what they included in this, and, you know, we're like, okay, well, maybe have a nice council attend to that. Talking to Toby, uh, I need to, I need to, I need to adjust some things, you know, right, and we just need to. Either decide to do it or not, so.
Almost approve the proposal from NLC Construction, and then eighty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for the addition of public works office addition at eight oh two South Terry. Second. Motion to approve, any further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
Hi.
Maxwell.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi. Business item number nine, approval of water purchase agreement.
Well, nothing changes. Um. The date changed to May first because it's been, uh, like, everything is ironed out before then. And, uh, so that's really the only thing that changed, and they recommended, since we have a council meeting, we might as well just do a formal reapproval of it, so.
Move to approve the water purchase agreement with Sibley Iowa for additional supply of Lewis and Clark water effective May one, twenty twenty-one, second. Have a motion to approve during further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
I'm Maxwell.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.
Olsen.
Hi.
Business item number ten, consider quote from box process excavating for twenty twenty-one central area water main.
Uh, this is a planned and budgeted project for twenty-one, uh, it's going water main in the central area of town. Uh. You may be aware that our two water towers. Don't talk as low as we want them to talk, we, we need twelve inch water main connecting from one to the other, right now, there's just a gap. And we're getting closer and closer every, uh, every year. And we're getting closer and closer every, every year with that. This will be not only supplying a twelve inch water main that could increase those flows, but also improve looping. Devin has one water main loop coming through foundation over Creekside right now. With this, we're gonna have another a loop and a safety thing, you know, as far as supply and things like that. And so I put together these plans. We spoke to a contractor that's done some work with us previously. I actually were involved with the water main break last year and they did an outstanding job. And so we're comfortable with these guys. Joe, when you say talking, you mean like equalization of pressure between the two water towers? Yeah, yeah, things like that. If one water tower is not flowing as much as the other or if there's or if there's a a supply draw on one side of town for some reason, we want to make sure that the water drop system can get over there. We don't necessarily have that today, but you know, it's it's always better certain areas of town are drawing less supply to just get that remedy. One water tower is supposed to address one side of town. It got it.
Right, yeah, it should be a whole.
Really has nothing to do with this, but if you looked at to see where, how close we are to the third water tower.
Yeah.
Where that would be located and how that would.
I would. I would say in the next five to ten years, there's a water tower. And
Probably more west.
Yeah, I don't want to give away too much for landowner negotiations type thing, but be be in the northwest area. That's obviously where the elevation is the highest. And it's pretty good, the most benefit from.
That's where we can go.
Yeah.
Look at it, you know, exactly.
Is that location also dependent on proximity to a Lewis and Clark main or anything like that? I wouldn't, not necessarily. We do have the Lewis and Clark main. It wouldn't hurt to have another make a backup at the very least. We also we do get a little bit of supply from Lincoln County, which kind of helps us push some things around also or at one oh six Minnesota. But you know, any, any extra connections is always effective too.
And we already have the water main siding going under Minnesota right now. Be able for them to that new one.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of sleeves under Minnesota for various things. That's a lot, I believe so.
Like I said, had nothing to do with this.
Yeah, well, I think every year we're trying to do some sort of project where we try to keep these closed throughout town, twelve inch water main here and there. Or wherever we keep it growing, you know, and those travel roads here for things like that, so. I think the annexation is pretty good.
Yeah. You said we've used these guys before for what was it again?
We had a water main break on Grand and
Definitely.
Chestnut.
Walnut.
Walnut, right.
One of those nut trees.
Yeah. Okay. They've done some various small things. They're they're around. I think they're had their offices in actually, yeah, over in, over there. They they're a little bit smaller company, but they've done some of our storm sewer repairs, things like that. They're just an all around, actually, they're a company.
And you said this was already what you're for?
Yeah.
I'm going to approve the quoting Black House excavating the twenty twenty one central area water project in the amount of ninety nine thousand seven hundred seventy seven hundred seventy five.
Second. Have a motion to approve with any further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Bert.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Bolton.
Hi.
Thank.
Hi.